Is everyone ready to get started? Okay. With that, I will call the study session to order. And our first item on the diocese, DR 23-11 Higley Barnes, Phase Two with Ms. Kristin.
Good evening, Commission. The case I have for discussion tonight is for Higley Barnes, Phase Two. The project is located at the southwest corner of Williamsfield Road and Wade Drive, commonly referred to as the old potato barn. Tonight, I'm seeking input, just general feedback and permission for the applicant to proceed with CDs at risk. Right, and the site plan is approximately 4.8 acres. It was originally approved in 2017 and then amended in 2020 to modify the phasing on the site. The original site plan had included two buildings as part of Phase Two and is being brought forward to amend the site plan again to include only one building. The proposed building is 13,300 square feet and will include a variety of uses, including animal services, restaurant, and retail. Along the east side of the development is a 50-foot-wide gas easement that runs north-south along Wade Drive. Staff is currently working with the applicant and the gas company to gain approval to construct parking spaces and a new access drive over that gas easement. The proposed building is a one-story mixed-use building with a primary height of 22 feet and then a height of 34 and 1/2 feet to the top of the pitched roof portions. The design is reflective of a farm-style agrarian concept and complements the existing buildings on-site. The primary building material being used is masonry block with metal wall siding on the exterior of the north-end suite and an EVA's material at the exterior of the south-end suite. The roof is a dark green metal seam roof with exposed steel beams and trusses being used as accent materials underneath the sloped areas of the roof. And then here are some renderings of the project. And then these are the colors and materials that are being proposed. And with that, I'm just hoping to get some general feedback from you today as well as permission for the applicant to proceed with CDs at risk, once we've received confirmation from the gas company that they can construct those parking spaces and drive aisle over the easement. And I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kristin. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Commissioner Simon, please take it away.
I can start. Kristin, thank you for the presentation. I actually really like this development. I like the look of this building. My only question would be with regards to service access on these buildings. I don't see any rear service access. Is that of concern? Is that been in conversation?
So Chairman, Commissioner Simon, it has been a question that we've brought up to them multiple times. We would prefer that there are service entries at the rear. However, it's not a requirement per code. They have to put them in, and they've opted not to.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Simon. Vice Chairman Bianchi, please.
Thank you, Chair. So Kristin, can you go back? I just want to make sure, can you point out where that gas line actually runs? It's not parallel to the railroad tracks. It's actually in front of the building. Where is it?
Does this work? How do I work this? I don't know how to work it. Oh, there it goes. So it runs right here.
And does the staff have any issues or are you guys in general agreement that this phase and Phase One kind of have a similar design and they really don't conflict with one another?
Correct.
Okay.
They took the two buildings, and the two buildings were smaller, and then they made the one building a little bit larger, but overall, it's less square footage.
Okay. I think overall, as far as comments, I agree with Commissioner Simon. I like the incorporation of the pitched roofs and the side accents to kind of keep that barn or agrarian theme. In regards to the CD at risk, I think I'd be okay with it as long as they get their pipeline approval from the gas company over the parking. Other than that, I'd be fine with it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Davis.
Oh, sorry. Everett.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Commissioner Everett.
I don't know. He talks about landscaping, and that's what I'm about to hit. So Kristin, my question is, what kind of plant materials are you anticipating can go in that gas line? I'm going to guess no trees, but I think the staff report talked about dispersing trees elsewhere on the site, but what will we actually see in that area where the gas line is going to be?
So Chairman, Commissioner Davis, the perimeter landscaping was all installed with Phase One of the project, and it's mostly just small shrubbery. The trees that were anticipated to be along there have all been relocated to the rear most line, but at the rear of the building, next to the tracks.
Okay, well, is it just DG then with some, any kind of shrubbery or anything in that area?
I don't recall off the top of my head, I'm sorry. I just know that it was small, little shrubbery, no trees, nothing like that.
The renderings look like they included some trees, but I didn't think those were probably real.
Going the wrong way. There we go. So you can see 172nd Street is Wade Drive.
Okay.
So it's not specific, but it's a concept.
I guess just seeing something green in that area seems like there needs to be something to kind of fill that space. I understand if they can't have trees, but it feels like they should have something going on if they're allowed to.
Very good. Commissioner Everett.
Yeah. My one concern is the backside on the east side of the property, it looks, yeah, in fact, actually, I could see that elevation, that would help. So the east side kind of acts a little bit more like a frontage, and you know, they've got the shortest side facing the street, and if you're approaching from the east, you're seeing this big mass, it's just the backside of the building, and without trees to break it up, it's a similar concern, but yeah, it just seems to be like a large mass, and so just, I'm looking for something to break that up a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Fairgauge, anything you'd like to add?
Nope, I'm cool with it.
Drainage seems good, then. Okay. And the garbage location, perfect. Well, Kristin, I think, you know, along with the comments here, I like the undulating roofs. I like the green color, and I also like the awnings that were added as an accentuator to it. But I think that I would echo the other commissioners that adding some trees as they show in the renderings, if you look at the aerial, it does not have any trees in the renderings. There are, I would just say that it would, I would hope that they intend to make it look similar to that. So that would be my suggestion. And then as for, you know, the CDs at risk, I personally don't have a problem, and I would just open it up to the diocese to see if anyone else has any concerns that way. Seeing none, I think that we're good to go and just let them know what we said.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving right along to number two tonight, we have DR 23-155 Medical Office Buildings, very special name that Keith probably came up with. Mr. Keith Newman.
Chairman, members of the commission, good evening. As you have stated, this is a design review case for the medical office buildings development. So this development is located south of the Gilbert Mercy Hospital, as you can see on the map in front of you along Rome Street, kind of at that northeast corner, north of the northeast corner of Rome and Germaine. It's north and east of the existing apartment complex that was developed five years ago or so called BB Living. And just for some little bit of background information, this site was previously approved for a geriatric and adult behavioral health hospital-type facility. It was just the west half of the property that's along Rome and Melrose. It was about four and 1/2 acres or so. About two years ago now, it was approved, and they have, the developer has decided to move on from that project and completely redesign the site and re-get a new approval for this medical office building site. So as far as the request is concerned, obviously, it's a design review to develop a 14 and 1/2 acre or 14.45 acre medical office complex. And the applicant was gracious enough to provide me with this awesome rendering that shows you the site from a bird's eye view, kind of hovering in the air there from the north, and you can see how it wraps around the BB Living multifamily development. As far as the site plan is concerned, I've stated already how large it is, about 14 and 1/2 acres. The site is zoned general office on the, I should have highlighted it for you, so I apologize, but the portion close to Rome Street, that four and 1/2 acre area, or actually up to, if I can point, like about right in here, is zoned general office. And then the rest of it, this portion back in here along Coronado Street, is neighborhood office zoning. So you have split zoning districts, which is not a major problem. They've just adjusted setbacks and landscape setbacks along each frontage to account for the different zoning districts. There are 10 buildings on the site. Eight of them are about 9,500 square feet, and it's the buildings that you can tell on here, the buildings with the smaller footprints are the 9,000-square-foot buildings. And then you have two buildings that are in about 19,000 square feet as you get closer to Rome Street. All these buildings are single stories. They're single-story buildings. There's about 114,000 square foot of total medical office building space. There are three access locations into the site. You have one off of Rome, you have another one off of Melrose, and then another one, and then one off of Coronado Street as it curves and heads out towards Germaine. So there is a way, the road does continue and go all the way out to Germaine, so there is plenty of access and circulation in order to get to this site, to access the medical offices for the future patients and employees that will use this property. There are about 587 parking spaces on-site. Oh, before I get into that, I wanted to mention really quick, this is the design review case. I should have mentioned this at the beginning, but there's also two simultaneous applications that we are reviewing with this DR case. We're reviewing a preliminary plat to subdivide all of these units, and each of them will have, I believe, six, if I remember correctly, six suites per building, and then, except the big ones, it looks like they'll have more. So we're processing a preliminary plat to kind of condo plat this. And then also, we are processing a simultaneous application for an administrative use permit for, the applicant has requested a reduction in parking. They have 587 parking spaces on-site. They're required to have 761 parking spaces. So we are going through the process right now through an AUP to, we're looking, we're still in the early stages of studying the applicant's proposal, but they are proposing to reduce the amount of parking spaces down to 587. And this permit, this AUP, enables staff to consider a reduction for businesses whose building designs are uniquely limited structurally for specific uses. So the types of uses that the applicant is proposing that could meet this reduction criteria are uses such as rooms that are going to be used for things like MRI machines or X-ray machines or mechanical rooms and rooms like that where the public doesn't go into, and rooms that just take up, rooms that have equipment that take up a lot of space where, that wouldn't need to count towards the parking ratios or the required parking numbers on a development site. So we're still in the process of analyzing that. We have asked the applicant to revise a few things in their parking study, and once we get more of that data and information that we've asked the applicant for, then we can finish that analysis and determine whether or not their reduction in parking is appropriate. So that's an ongoing process. So as far as the rest of the site is concerned, oh, here's the larger version of the site plan in case you wanted to see some more details. I'll just flip through these ones really quick. And we can go back to them later if you want to, if you need to see things in greater detail. But the majority of the parking is all the buildings, the street, road frontages, and the parking's obviously behind the buildings. You have loading zones on the south side of some of the buildings and on the west side of some of the other buildings based on their orientation. Landscaping, as far as the landscaping plan is concerned, a lot of landscaping around the perimeter, especially along Melrose Street and Coronado and Rome Street, and then you have a lot of landscaping, of course, in the buffer between the BB Living development and this development. Here's the black and white versions in case you wanted to see things in more detail, if you want to go back to these slides later. As far as the elevations are concerned, they're mainly flat roof structures with parapet walls, and the colors are grays and tans, and so they're pretty typical colors, and you have stucco buildings and with porcelain tile. Town staff is working with the developer right now to maybe add another material on these buildings to kind of give them a little bit more variety, but as a whole, the buildings, we feel, are fairly, a fairly good design. So we just had minor tweaks and changes to these building elevations. But these are building type one with two different color schemes, a little bit different hues of colors. And then here's the larger building, building type two, just do two different color schemes. They're very similar to each other still, but just a little bit different. So those are the buildings, and they're about 17 feet tall. And here's some perspectives, kind of see the little pretty picture of what these buildings are going to look like. So we would just like to get some maybe feedback if you have it on some of the buildings. And the applicant graciously provided these to us. We are appreciative. Here again is that awesome perspective that shows the site, it kind of, like a helicopter is hovering in the air, pretty cool little view of the property, kind of see the relationship between that and the BB Living. So as far as, so that concludes my presentation, but as far as the input tonight is, just wanted to get your general thoughts and input on the overall site design and general thoughts or input on the elevations. And also, the applicant would like to proceed with CDs at risk, as we've completed one review so far, but wanted to get your input as far as whether or not you feel it would be appropriate for them to proceed with CDs at risk. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. Up to the commission, would anybody like to open up with some questions or comments for Keith? Commissioner Davis.
Why not? Thank you, Chair. Keith, I guess my question is on the parking. My concern being that, so let me, I'll just put it this way first. So what you're saying with the consideration for the AUP is that they'll extract those areas that are going to be equipment-heavy out of the calculation for the parking. We know uses change, and medical office buildings are typically pretty heavy demand for parking. So I guess I have concerns about that in that if we approve an at-risk moving forward, they're not able to make that work. They're in plan review, and they've got, we don't know what they're going to do for additional parking because they're pretty locked in here. Is there parking available on the street that would offset that? Or would a building go away? I guess those are my questions as to what would happen if they were not granted that AUP.
Chairman, Commissioner Davis, as far as that is concerned, like I said earlier, we're still in the very early stages of this, of analyzing whether or not this parking reduction is something we're going to support. We still have a lot of information that the applicant still needs to provide us, but as far as if for some reason it doesn't get, we don't support it, and they have to add the additional parking spaces, they would have to, there is no parking allowed on the roadways, to my knowledge. They would have to shrink building square footages or eliminate a building in order to make it work. I can't see any other solution in the event that we don't support the parking reduction. Hopefully, that answers your question.
It does. 174 spaces reduction is pretty significant, and because medical office buildings typically tend to need that parking, it's been my experience anyway. So I was just concerned about granting an at-risk with that kind of heavy thing out there that we don't know the answer to, as to whether or not they can justify that AUP. So I guess that's where I'm at at the moment.
Okay. And Chairman, Commissioner Davis, I mean, it is their risk to take, and if it doesn't work at the end of the day, and they eventually, during the permitting review, hopefully, we'll be able to find, figure that out and have an answer for them, whether or not we support it or not. And then that would just, that would stop their permitting process, obviously, so hopefully things would catch up. But hopefully, we'll find that out sooner rather than later, and then that's at their risk, they submit, so that would just derail their permitting process, review process.
Other than that, I did like the buildings. I think they're nicely designed. I have no problem if they want to add in another material. They wouldn't even necessarily have to do that on every building, just incorporate it, you know, in some of the buildings to mix it up a little bit, but it's a nice project, the exception of concerns with parking, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Simon, please.
Thank you. Keith, thank you for the presentation. I would agree with Commissioner Davis, 170-plus parking spaces. If the applicant was coming with use on these and we knew what was going in there, I mean, because these are going to be medical shell, and so then they're going to be built out, so depending on what that build out looks like and that use looks like, it would be concerning for me. I mean, outside of the parking, I think that it's a very well-thought-out development. I'm just struggling with that parking reduction because I would agree that medical, depending on what type of medical, can be very heavy use. I mean, and if you get practitioners that have their offices there, they could be slammed with patients. And so, yeah, if it was a MRI division or something taking up one full building, you know that's never going to move, and it's going to be there for the next 20 years. So, but that would be my biggest concern, is just that parking reduction. I think that, you know, as that goes through the process, we can weed that out, but, you know, again, if they were coming with some use on it and I saw that, then I could say, yeah, for sure. But that's where my hesitation lies. Other than that, I like the buildings, like the use, and that's a pretty picture you gave us, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Simon. Indeed, it is quite pretty. Vice Chairman Bianchi.
Thank you, Chairman. So Keith, just can you confirm with these, so the parking decrease, that's administrative review? That would not come back to us? Is that correct?
Chairman, Commissioner Bianchi, that is correct. That is an administrative use permit, and you guys will never see that application.
So I like that they're doubling the open space, but that's coming at the reduction of parking, correct? From, I think, 15%, I think in the staff report said it was required, and I think 33% is being provided?
Chairman, Commissioner Bianchi, that is correct. They're providing approximately 33% open space. So that is double what is typically required in a development like this.
And then, actually, can you confirm on the elevation? So is that a kind of a glass door front, or is it just at the doors with aluminum around it? It looks like it's pretty much all glass front.
Yeah. Chairman, Commissioner Bianchi, it's glass windows with aluminum framing.
Okay. I just didn't know if it was just around the doors or not. Okay. Thanks, Keith. I think, other than that, I agree with what Commissioners Davis and Simon said. I agree with them on all points. I like that the buildings front the street and just not straight parking. I like that it's a one-story with residential across from Coronado. I think that's helpful as well. I think the access points included look good, and as well as the elevations, but like we had talked about, that's with the parking, you know, how do we, especially with a medical complex where all the hours of operation are pretty much similar, so that I think that demand is there. But, and I know just the general makeup of the site, it can kind of make that additional parking difficult without losing a building or so, but. parking difficult without losing a building or so, but I share the same sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Fay.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith. I'm not going to rehash some of the parking points. I, I think it is a heavy lift, but I don't think, and I'm usually pretty liberal about CDs at risk. I used to give them away pretty freely. I think I've used the "like candy" expression. CDs at risk are appropriate where things are progressing. CDs at risk are appropriate where there's unknowns, but, you know, we'll, we'll get there. I don't think CDs at risk are appropriate where there's a philosophical disagreement until that's resolved. And this, this one looks to me like a big one that, it seems to me like that has to be resolved before you would, yeah, it, CDs at, yeah, it's always the applicant's risk, I get it, but it's not appropriate when there's a disagreement in this magnitude. It, it seems like this is something that has to be resolved before you would issue CDs at risk. I, I can wait if, if that would be better for you guys to finish that conversation.
Yeah, sorry, guys. So, so basically, the applicant, Lindsey Shubi, was saying that if they, if, if they had to, they would remove a building or two and move forward with the development if, if the parking code and the, and the amend, text amendment that we're currently going through, that was, I believe, going to go to council at the end of the month. If that didn't work out, based on that text amendment and the new, the new language and the new provisions that are, that are hopefully going to be approved, then they would definitely remove a building or two, but they would, they would like the permission to move forward with CDs at risk.
Is the, I mean, have we looked at this under the new code? First of all, I don't know that the new code's happening. I posted, but I, I think we, as a group, I was, I think that was one of, one of many six-one votes lately. Would this, would this project be fine under the new code?
Chair, Chair Mont, Commissioner Fay, to be honest with you, we still have to look at it, and that's something that we, we still need to analyze, is whether or not it would be appropriate, or whether or not would fit under the parameters of the new code. That's an exercise that we haven't really gone through yet.
I, I don't know that unless we get somewhere on firmer ground on this issue, that CDs at risk are necessarily appropriate yet.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gage?
Thank you, Chair. I, I don't have a problem with CDs at risk. It's their risk, so, yeah, it's, it's their money to spend, so I don't have a problem with it, and I just like to disagree with Bill sometimes.
Sometimes?
All the time.
Naturally. Anyone else? Mr. Everett? Okay. Well, I will say, I agree with caution. The, the one place that does give me pause in my caution is the fact that their open space is double. Usually, in cases like this, it would be packing more buildings in, and given that a developer is putting in additional open space, that usually, well, I shouldn't say usually, that could indicate, in my mind, that they do have an intention of putting in appropriate uses. I also think if, in fact, the new code does go through as administrative approval, that the staff would do a sufficient job. So in that case, and, you know, of course, given it's their money, I am okay. I'm very not in tune with parking reductions, but I do understand that uses could change. My pause is that we don't have control over that as a commission, but given that staff does, I think that there is a safeguarding within that realm.
Chair, Chair Mont, members of the commission, it is our intention once, because this parking code, LDC, proposal went before the council last night in the study session, and we, and it's going to go before council at the end of this month, hopefully for approval. It is our intention to fully review the proposed parking reduction and compare it with the changes that are proposed. And if it complies with those changes and priz, complies with the provisions that the new code will potentially approve, would that make you feel more comfortable with us recommending CDs at risk? If, if it complies better with the new LDC proposed changes that could be approved by council? Would that make you feel more comfortable allowing them to move forward with CDs at risk, if staff feels comfortable with it?
For me, it would, given that it's a new code, much like a new law is enacted, whether we like it or not. I think then, yes. I don't know. Commissioner Fay may still not like it, but he also is a pragmatic individual who does understand the law, and that if it is a code that costs, I'm not going to speak for him, but I believe that he would say, you know, you guys all did this, not me, but yes. So yes, in, in my purview, I, I look at this, and I, I take into account the concerns of the rest of the commission, but I believe that this is a very good use for this tract. I believe, I remember very well when the other use was coming in, that there was concerns about the clientele that would be in there. The only thing that I would suggest is just something like a Sonora Quest or someplace like that that has innumerable people pounding in and out, and there's one in this same area that I've gone to, and I couldn't find parking, but I'm still very healthy. So, but there is that, and so if those uses, I think I would just urge extreme caution, and I, I think that putting that onto the staff, I would be comfortable with that myself, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Gage, please.
Thank you. I, so I was kind of taken aback when I saw the extra open space, how we count open space in, in this town as a, like, everything that doesn't have a building or a parking lot on it. And so my first thought was like, well, why do we have so much open space and we're, don't have enough parking? But this site is so weird, and with different zoning districts and different setbacks, it, the shape, I, I don't see anywhere, I don't lay things out like this for a living, but I don't see anywhere where they could take away open space and turn it into parking. It's so tight, and I think they've done a really good job trying to fill this site in. So, yeah, the, that's all, is, it's just, it's a weird one. I think they did a good job and with different zoning districts and setbacks, and I have an overall problem with how we calculate open space here, and what is involved in, included in open space, but I, I think you guys did a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner Gage. I think at least on this one, they did not try to say internal open space, which I know I've seen before in some multifamily, which was innovative, to say the least. But yes, Keith, I think if we were to say, assuming the code does follow up, it is passed, it is set into stone, and that, that then matches what you are able to do as an administrative review, I, I would be comfortable with that. And I also think that nobody wants to build a medical office that there's no parking for. Sick or elderly people that need to go in and have something done, meandering through the street is clearly not a good business practice. So I have to imagine that this is going to be something that is handled from an economic development vantage point, so, as well as, of course, internally. So, yes, I think, assuming you have everything you need, and that me saying that gives you the autonomy to do so, I think we're good.
All right. Sounds good to me. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
I still love Commissioner Fay, but let's move on to number three. Discussion of the regular meeting agenda. I see that on the consent, we have number seven, the Gilbert Spectrum Building. Is there anyone that thinks that needs to be removed from consent and have a presentation? Is there anyone in the public that would like to see this? Didn't see anyone. All right, on the non-consent, we have Heritage North. However, it is sent to be continued to March sixth, so I believe, if I am correct, and this would be legal question, that we could move that continuance to the consent agenda?
I believe you'll have to leave that one on the public hearing, and then
And then approve the consent.
Move, move individually to continue it to a specific date.
There I go again with my authoritarian ways. Okay. So that one will stay. And given that that's the end of the agenda, I assume that we're all okay with the rest of it. So with that, I will conclude the study session and see everybody back in fourteen minutes at 6:00 PM for the beginning of the regular meeting. Should I wait on Councilman Anderson? Is he?
He is sick and will not be joining us.
Okay. Then I shall not wait. Okay. Then with that, I will call to order the regular meeting. First point of business, Pledge of Allegiance, please stand and join me.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Eva, could we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Everett?
Here.
Alternate De Gravina? Commissioner Simon?
Here.
Commissioner Gage?
Here.
Commissioner Fay?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson? Vice Chairman Bianchi?
Here.
Chairman Munt?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Eva. Okay, we'll move on now to number four, approval of the agenda. And I will not claim that this is last month's agenda again. So if I could get a motion, I know we had some discussion.
Chairman, if you're ready. I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion from Vice Chair Bianchi. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Gage with the second. I assume there's no discussion, so please move on to the voting and hit your machines. Vote carries 7-0, unanimous approval of the agenda. Communications, at this point, we're going to open up to communications from citizens. And at this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, and the commission may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda. Therefore, pursuant to state law, action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration. I do not have any cards in front of me. Are there any citizens who are here that would like to speak? Not seeing any? We will move on. Number six, report from the council liaison on current events, and I do see that Councilman Anderson has rejoined us, so please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we need to share some of our public comments with you all. Tell them they need to come to
I would like to say I think we're good.
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, just it's getting to be springtime. You know, there's a lot more activity in the town going on in the springtime. And just as a reminder, some of the things that are happening, I do know we have Gilbert Feeding Families, it's an annual event that happens during this month. There is also an outdoor recreation event that happens out at the Reparium Preserve during this month. It's a very popular event. I forget the date, but it's the middle part of this month. HD South has their annual fundraiser, the Night of the Museum, which will be coming up in the first couple of days of March, March 2nd, I think. And a very big item that's happening here in the next two weeks is the grand opening of the new terminal out at Williams Gateway Airport, which is a big deal for the town and for the whole East Valley. Opening up a new portion of the airport will bring more economic development in the community. And we're looking forward to that and getting that operating. So lots of things happening. If tonight, if we finish soon enough, you're all invited also to the Gilbert Symphony, which is a free event that's happening at the Higley Center for the Performing Arts tonight. That's a big thing for us, being able to get that going again. I think that's it.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I'd like to say I hope that grand opening at Gateway goes well and there's not any planning snafus brought upon by Vice Chairman Bianchi.
Right, and I'm somewhat vaguely familiar with that project, so.
Very well. Okay, moving on to the public hearing consent. All items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The commission may, by a single motion, approve any number of items where, after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item to be removed from consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commission shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. We have a sole item, number seven, on this consent agenda this evening, DR 23-81, Gilbert Spectrum Building, eight. And given that, I will open to say, is there anyone in the public that wish to speak on this item that I should pull it? Not seeing any? I'm going to leave it on, and I'm then going to open up for a motion. Seven-oh, unanimous approval on the consent. Moving forward, public hearing, non-consent. The non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. I do not have any cards in front of me. I will once again look to the crowd to see if there's any of the many individuals in here who would like to speak. Not seeing any? I will then go and say we can open item number eight, Z 23-08, Heritage North. And I note that there is a continue to March 6, 2024 listed. So given that there will not be a presentation, I will open up for a motion related to the continuance of Z 23-08.
Chairman, if you're ready. I would move to continue Z 23-08 to the March 6, 2024 public hearing.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Bianchi. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Simon with the second. Thank you, sir. Any discussion? No. Please move to press your buttons. Seven to zero, unanimous. We shall see this in March. Moving on to administrative items, these are for the commission discussion in action. It is to the discretion of the majority of the commission regarding public input requests on any administrative item. Persons wishing to speak on an administrative item should complete a public comment card indicating the item number with which you wish to address. The commission may or may not accept public comment. I choose to accept. Is there any public comment? There is not. Moving on to number nine, planning commission minutes. This is from last month as well as December 6th. I'd like to consider the approval of the minutes of the study session and regular meetings of December 6, 2023, and January 3, 2024. And I believe this can be a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Gage?
There is an error in the December minutes. Unless Ashley got promoted, she was wrongly identified by her job title as Planning Manager McDonald.
Nice try, Ashley.
Sorry, Eva. Didn't want to let you know this way, but yeah. She did it.
Thank you for noticing that. We'll have that changed immediately.
That's cold. That is cold. I thought she actually had been promoted and whoo. Okay, so assuming we get that piece correct, I would then like to say that pending that adjustment, if we'd like to have a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve with the adjustment of the former planning manager to principal planner, I believe. Both the December and January minutes as written.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Simon.
Seconded.
Commissioner Everett with the second. Putting poor Ms. Ashley back in her place, thanks to Commissioner Gage. Okay. Any discussion? No. All right, please move on to the buttons. Moving right along, we have communications, and we have an executive session. I will not read about said executive session because we are not having one. And then we have a report from Chairman and members of the commission on current events. Do I have any current event reports? It's a very dry crowd here. Okay. Well, it was cold out and rainy today. Everybody be careful. And with that, we'll move on to number 11. Eva, a report from the planning services manager that is not Ashley.
I would just like to thank you all for voting unanimously to reinstate me as planning manager and also tell you that prior to this meeting, a few of us met with students from the seventh grade Mesa Accelerated and Gifted Academy. They are doing their future city project, and they won regionals, and they, in two days, go to Washington, T.C. to compete in the national competition. So we wish them well. They were brilliant, and their future city was really exciting to see.
You know, ironically, I was a judge in that, and we gave them an award from NCOSI, the Systems Engineering Group that I'm currently the president of. But their report and their model was unbelievable. They had nuclear fusion drawers that came out of the bottom and had the reactor sitting there. It was better than most things I would see college students do. So I just, I think that it's a testament to the local educational system, and I think they're doing well, so.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm glad you also saw their model. It was amazing.
And if anybody would like to, I can share it because I have it, and it's, it is really amazing. Okay. With that, I'm going to go for a motion to adjourn the meeting because, once again, I am not an authoritarian subject.
Chairman, I move to approve, to adjourn.
Yeah, thank you. We have a move to adjourn the meeting from Vice Chairman Bianchi. Do I have a second?
I will second.
All right, Commissioner Davis with the second. All those in favor, please press the green button when it's ready. There we go.